For Tuesday, February the 10th, 2015. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Calling the roll, Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
I'm here.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Is there?
Mr. Germana. Mr. Germana is absent today. Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Shawn.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
And President Brady.
I'm here.
There is a quorum.
Could I have a motion to excuse Councilman Germana? He's out of town today.
So moved and seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any public comment related to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, there is. Judge Russo would like to address counsel.
Ready?
Good afternoon. I'm here to speak to item.
I don't think you're mine. I was looking at it.
Confirmation hearing regarding our nomination for our clerk of courts. There we go. And so I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak. I had an opportunity to write a letter on behalf of Ms. Byrd and decided I'd rather come in person this afternoon. And so if I could just speak briefly, I've been a lawyer for 23 years, 11 years on the bench, and I'll start in my second year as administrative judge. I think everyone in this room sitting before me knows the importance of three rules. Is that on?
Somebody just texted me they're watching on TV. They can't hear you.
Yeah, so it says it's on.
Is it on? Okay.
The button is clicked.
Thank you, Judge. Item four, the item referred to committee, the confirmation hearings.
Excuse me, Mr. Brady. There's another speaker, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's County Prosecutor Tim McGinty.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to address counsel?
Excuse me, Mr. McGinty.
Thank you, Mr. President Brady. And counsel, I appreciate the opportunity to also speak on behalf of Ms. Byrd, your nominated next clerk of courts and the first African-American clerk of courts in this district. I look forward to a new day in our criminal justice system that we're working towards
Our receiver attorney. The closer to 90 percent of the short-term or long-term jail population were needing counsel. I'll do it for you, thanks. I try to be loud enough where I don't need any microphone. I'll put it right here for a minute. Thank you. We now have, thanks to some justice reform, and we've made great progress over the last 15 years, 10 years of active reform through the Criminal Justice Reform Committee and Governing Board, and we look forward to her participation and leadership. The clerks in New York are leaders. They're in nobody's patsy. They aren't subservient to anyone. They have their own responsibilities to see that the system works and works efficiently. I look forward to the day where we measure court costs, where we measure total court costs, the percentage of court costs received, that we measure fines, that we look at the total fines ordered and total fines received, that there's nothing secretive about it. I look forward to the day where we not only measure restitution, but we also measure the bond forfeitures that we fail to collect. And when we look at it, we see we're only collecting pennies on the dollars. I predict at the end of Ms. Byrd's couple, first couple of years, there'll be such progress, there'll be millions of dollars in difference in revenue and savings and efficiency. There'll be an increased public confidence in the criminal justice system, and it will be a more efficient, fair system, and that will deliver returns from those who are responsible for crime, and they pay their fair due and fair share of, as we would if we got a traffic ticket, if we run a stop sign, we pay. They should pay too. And, of course, the third rail is attorney fees. I believe she has the courage to touch the third rail and look at that, that if individuals are capable of paying, or aren't, and later are, that they repay the attorney fees for the assigned counsel, so that their visit to the criminal justice system does act as a deterrent. So it isn't a visit that sometimes happens where you get suspended court costs, suspended fine, restitution waived, and attorney fees waived, go home, sentenced, suspended. What was the harm? What was the deterrent to the criminal justice system? I think if we make people pay their financial obligations, it will deter them from future crime, and it's far cheaper than putting them in jail. I think that with the measurements and transparency and openness that I look forward to, people will spend less time in jail awaiting their attorney, awaiting their first appearance, and be given the opportunity for rehabilitative programs such as diversion, drug court, mental health court, and in a timely and efficient fashion. So I, too, am excited by Ms. Byrd's appointment to this position, and I think it's a brilliant reorganization by county. And if the organization goes into the safety director with our present Sheriff Bova and our new appointed Sheriff Pickney, if you so approve, I think we'll have a greater corroboration, more efficiency, a better level of justice achieved, and a public confidence that'll follow. I don't know of a person anywhere that's more qualified or more capable than Ms. Byrd for this position. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. This item has been referred to committee. Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution number 2015-0021, a resolution confirming the county executive's appointment of Nyla K. Byrd upon her taking the oath of office as clerk of courts of Cuyahoga County and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
All right, thank you. Welcome to the confirmation hearings at which counsel will consider the appointment of Nyla K. Byrd as clerk of courts. Clerk of courts is a county office listed in Article V of the Charter, meaning that the appointment is subject to the confirmation of counsel. According to the Charter, all of the Ohio Revised Code powers of and duties of the clerk of courts of common pleas relating to the serving of the operation of the courts are to be exercised and carried out by the appointed clerk of courts. Under our prior form of government, the clerk of courts was responsible for the issuance and recording of motor vehicle and watercraft titles. Those duties now fall under the fiscal officer. The council may also establish additional powers and duties for the clerk of courts by ordinance. The hearing process will proceed as follows. The nominee will be offered an opportunity to address her qualifications, motivations, and for seeking the position, an outlook regarding the office. Council members will then be offered the opportunity to ask questions of the nominee. We will do so in rounds, allowing each councilman to ask two questions per round until all council questions have been answered. Once all questions have been asked, we will entertain a motion to recommend that the council approve or reject the nomination at the next regular meeting. If we are not ready to act on that motion today, we will defer making the recommendation. Assuming a motion to recommend approval or rejection has been made, the council will vote on that recommendation at its next regular meeting. Thank you, and let's begin. Welcome, Ms. Byrd. You're a familiar figure.
Thank you. Can you all hear me? My...
The question is whether the people on TV can hear you.
Thank you for inviting me here today to speak to you all. As council president indicated, I'm probably a familiar face to most, if not all, of you because of my role for the last four years as inspector general of this county. But nonetheless, I thought it would be helpful to highlight a few of my professional accomplishments, my background and my work history for you. As you may or may not know, I was born and raised and educated in New York City. Immediately after attending law school, I began working at the Manhattan District Attorney's Office under the then-district attorney, Robert Morgenthau. Mr. Morgenthau served as district attorney in New York County for over three decades, and I was fortunate enough to be hired and work for him. As an assistant district attorney in New York County, I prosecuted felony cases, and I prosecuted them alone. I tried numerous felony cases to verdict. In New York County, a little different than here in Cuyahoga County, a felony assistant picks up the case at the point of arrest, and the case stays with us until ultimate disposition. So it's my case for arraignment, it's my case for the grand jury proceeding, it's my case through the motion practice, and I ultimately dispose of the case or try the case. So I had a lot of experience trying cases in front of various judges while an assistant district attorney. I also supervised younger assistant district attorneys, and I received special training to be a domestic violence assistant. I was working in New York City and on my way to the World Trade Center during the tragedy that happened in 9/11. It was at that moment I realized that I wanted to leave New York, which was quite unusual, being born, raised, educated there. I didn't know that there was life outside of New York City. But I relocated here to Cleveland, Ohio, the Cleveland, Ohio area, and began working at the international law firm Swire, Sanders &amp; Dempsey, now known as Swire, Patton &amp; Boggs, and I joined their litigation group. I did commercial litigation, I did some First Amendment work, and I did white-collar criminal defense and some internal investigations. But I was also and probably most proudest that while I was at Swire, because of my trial experience, albeit a criminal trial experience, I was fortunate enough to try a case in common pleas court, actually, with the head of the employment group. I was on loan to the employment group because I had a skill set on how to try a case. And we tried a case in which we represented Thistle Down Racetrack in Councilwoman Brown's district, and we thankfully and proudly got a defense verdict in that case, and it was just a great experience to have that under my belt. I left Swire Sanders and I joined what was then known as National City Bank, and I worked in their litigation group. I was an in-house lawyer. I did that for a number of years. Instead of handling my own cases, though, I now supervised outside counsel on the matters in which the bank was a defendant. I supervised counsel on cases, employment cases, minor theft cases, but also on complex, multi-defendant litigation, shareholder derivative actions, class action lawsuits, and spent a lot of time working on what was then known as the interchange lawsuit. The bank, if you'll recall, in mid to late 2000, the bank was bought by PNC, which is a Pittsburgh-based bank. I was fortunate enough at that time that I was offered a very lucrative opportunity to join the bank, but that meant joining the bank in Pittsburgh and not here in Cleveland as they were closing the law department in Cleveland. After a consultation with my family and my advisors, I declined that opportunity. And that opportunity was lucrative, not only in the financial compensation, but also in the fact of my responsibility and my title and sort of the succession planning. But nonetheless, I realized that I wanted to continue living in the greater Cleveland area and did not see myself as a person living in Pittsburgh. So I joined the U.S. Attorney's Office for the Northern District of Ohio, and I was there a very short time. But again, while I was there, again, I was fortunate enough that I tried a case there. I tried a case in front of Judge Patty Goine, who was the judge at that time, but I had to, as, to use a Judge Russo analogy, I had to play nice in the sandbox because U.S. Attorneys don't try cases by themselves, and I was used to trying the case by myself. So I had a partner, a senior assistant U.S. Attorney who I tried the case with. It was a drug case. It was a complicated drug case because there were no drugs, but we were saying that he was selling drugs, but we got a guilty verdict in that case. And it was during the pendency of that case that I began to have conversations with and was asked by the then-county executive at Fitzgerald if I wanted to join Cuyahoga County Government as the first inspector general, which I agreed, and I did, and that's where I met all of you. So that's sort of what I've done professionally as a lawyer for the past 15, 16 or so years. On a personal level, I have been married for 11 years to the same man. I dated that same man for seven or eight years before being married to him, so I have spent the better part of my adult life with this same man. He is a lawyer by trade, who I like to say is now in his second career, but I think it's more like his third or fourth because he no longer practices. But instead, he is an assistant principal of a high school in an inner city, here in the inner city. So he does that. We are the extremely proud, and those of you who have been to my office know this, that we are extremely proud parents of twin 10-and-a-half-year-old sons who are fifth graders, who keep us busy, but better than keeping us busy, make us extremely proud almost on a daily basis. So that's sort of who I am as the complete person. If I am selected as the next clerk of courts for Cuyahoga County, I will continue with many of the successful operational changes the prior clerk implemented, especially when it comes to protecting and saving our taxpayer dollars and streamlining processes for the public. For example, under the prior clerk, over $1.5 million in delinquent court costs was collected since 2013. I believe that the continued use of the attorney general's office in these collection efforts is necessary, if not mandatory, and plan to continue it. Second, I plan to ensure the continued success of the e-filing system, which is currently used, I believe, in the criminal, civil, foreclosure, and court of appeals. As many of you here know, e-filing allows for a significant reduction in the use of paper and resources needed to process files. Further, with e-filing, attorneys and their staff can file documents from their home, from their office, or from any location where they have access to a computer. Lastly, e-filing provides almost immediate access to information online. As of September 2014, I recently read that 94 percent of documents eligible to be e-filed were. I'd like to see that number increase in the future. Additionally, the prior clerk set up a help desk where trained staff educate people on e-filing, both in person and via telephone. I think that's something that's critical and should continue. The pro se workstations that were set up to help pro se litigants become familiar with e-filing is another thing that I think is critical. Also, the interim clerk of courts, Kelly Sweeney, who I believe is here behind me, currently does community outreach on e-filing, which I think is extremely important. She educates, I understand, members of our bar and does continuing legal education classes on training lawyers on e-filing, as well as speaking to paralegal classes on her weekends and on the weekends without compensation, just dedicating her time to teach those folks in those paralegal classes the benefits and how to use e-filing. You all who were here will recall that in 2013, the Department of Internal Audit completed an audit of the clerk of courts office. That audit was done as a direct response to the investigation that the Agency of Inspector General conducted regarding Mark Line, the prior criminal supervisor for the clerk of courts, where we referred that case to the prosecutor because we believed that he was stealing money. The Department of Internal Audit issued an audit finding that there were 75 citations, both operational as well as financial. The prior clerk of courts reviewed, corrected, and addressed all of these citations. If I were confirmed by you, I would be inheriting a clerk of court whose books are now balanced for the first time in 30 years. I obviously would intend to keep it that way. As a result of the audit, the unclaimed funds list is current. That, too, would remain current. Lastly, I'd like to emphasize that if I'm confirmed as the clerk of courts, the office will be one that focuses on three areas, and I apologize if I'm repetitive of what Judge Russo said, and we didn't talk previously, but I believe in much of what he said as well as what Mr. McGinty said. One is collaboration. It's important to bring people together, the judges, the other stakeholders, the county prosecutor, Mr. McGinty, and hear their ideas and get their input before making decisions. If I am confirmed as clerk of courts, I will listen, I will share my ideas, and at the end of the day, I will make a decision. But again, that decision must be made only after talking with and listening to people who not only have expertise, but also who may be impacted by those decisions. Secondly, is communication. Collaboration is not possible without communication. If I'm confirmed as the next clerk of courts, we will have open lines of communication. That is how I've always approached every job I've had, and it works. You talk to people, you hear people, but most importantly, you have to listen to people. That's how we will work if I'm confirmed and get things done. Third is professionalism. In all of my prior roles, especially most recently as inspector general, I have a vision of professionalism. As inspector general, I created a professional agency from the ground up, one that is respected not only here in Cuyahoga County, but in the state of Ohio, as well as in the inspector general community nationally. Not only are we dedicated and committed to the work that we do, but we strive to be the best in our field through training, networking, hard work, and dedication. All eight of the staff members, we regularly network, we meet, and we learn from others in our field, as well as engaging and discussing issues with one another. If I'm confirmed as the next clerk of courts, I plan to bring the same level of professionalism to the clerk's office. I'm committed to employee engagement. Without true employee engagement, an office, an agency, a department cannot and will not be successful. Just as I currently do with the Agency of Inspector General staff, if confirmed, I will meet with and listen to every employee's concerns and evaluate those concerns. I will create an organizational culture where employees are responsible and accountable, respected and valued. Employees who are highly skilled and provide a high level of customer service will do their jobs effectively and efficiently. I'm currently in the process of developing additional ideas about ways to improve the clerk of courts office and operations, and if confirmed, I promise I will conduct a complete assessment. I want to pursue, of course, these ideas after having discussions and many discussions and working collaboratively with not only the judges, but the prosecutor and the other stakeholder who the ideas affect. In conclusion, I'd like to thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Questions by the committee? Councilman?
Thank you, and congratulations on the nomination. Historically, the clerk of court is an officer of the court, and when you go back in time, it's the scribe, it's the record keeper for courts, and this duty historically has lied, fiduciary obligation is with the court. In our charter government, however, there's a mixed hybrid role of accountability to both the clerk as the court's clerk, as well as to report to the executive. How do you see your role in this hybrid government and where your fiduciary lies, responsibility lies?
I think, Councilwoman, the residents of this community have been clear that they voted for the charter form of government, which does say that the executive... Which does say that the executive appoints the clerk, and the clerk is confirmed by counsel. If I am confirmed by this counsel, I would obviously work for the executive. But as you have said, and as I've discussed in my prepared statements, I cannot work effectively and will not work effectively without collaboration and open communication with the courts. The work, much of the work that the clerk does directly impacts and affects the judges and the court, as well as the other stakeholders. And so I think you have to be, and you cannot be, successful without being collaborative and including them and providing, hearing their input and making a decision. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. And I have one more, Mr. President. So do you think it's the role of the clerk to pursue indigent criminal defendants to seek reimbursement for their fees to the public defender and/or assigned counsel? Would that be the role of the clerk, and would you favor that pursuit? We heard that in the prosecutor, and I wanted to follow up with that.
That's an interesting question, and I can, let me answer it two ways. I am not familiar with all of the roles of the clerk because I'm still functioning, obviously, as the inspector general. It's my understanding that judges make indigency determinations during hearings and during their court processes. That's just my experience having been on the other side. I think, though, that the clerk's office has to be diligent in the collection of those fees by sending notices and assisting for, sending notices and asking people to collect the fees. But in terms of the direct answer, I'd need to really research that, Councilwoman. I don't know what the statute says and what the responsibility is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President, you know, being indigent means you can't afford to pay fees, so...
No, I do know that.
And it'd be like collecting, trying to file bankruptcy and come back later, you know, two years later and win the lottery. It's just, that's not how the system really is set up to serve the indigent community.
But my understanding also, Councilwoman, and again, I could be wrong, and I'm going back to the New York days with indigency with defendants, is if a defendant is clearly indigent, then the court fees are waived, so there is nothing to collect.
Do you see any changes in the staffing structure of the clerk of courts?
I have taken a look. I understand that the clerk's office is budgeted, I believe, for 117 FTEs. I've taken a look at the current organizational chart, and I've discussed with the interim clerk that they are down on their numbers because they are doing the job effectively with less people. I don't anticipate, and I would have to do, obviously, a full assessment and really delve into what the staffing is and how the folks are doing their jobs, but at this point, I don't anticipate coming before you or asking for additional money for additional staff.
Okay. Councilman?
Yes, Mr. Chair. To Nyla, how do you, do you have any plans to implement a strategic plan and give counsel a quarterly progress review?
Give counsel a review of the strategic plan?
Do you plan on having a strategic plan?
I think with any job, I, with any job that I've had, I need to have, and once if confirmed, I will obviously have a 30-day, a 60-day, a 90-day plan, et cetera, and a strategic plan on what I need to do and an assessment. As far as giving counsel a quarterly review or approval of that plan, I had not thought that far.
Okay, and so maybe think a little further for a longer period of time of a strategic plan, maybe a couple of years or something like that, to see where your office... And I know you have to get involved and see what's going on because you're doing two roles right now. And my second question would be, could you speak to why you choose to transition from the inspector general right now to the clerk of court?
Sure. I think it's twofold. I see it as a tremendous opportunity. I see it as a growth for me as a professional. I see it as a place where my skill set can be utilized, where I can make a difference.
I see it as a place where my skill set can be utilized, where I can make a difference. And I look forward to the opportunity and want to do it. I'll come back.
Mr. President, thank you. And to Ms. Byrd, first of all, thank you very much for your service to Cuyahoga County as our first Inspector General, and congratulations on your recommendation for appointment. And my question also relates to the role of the office. Prosecutor McGinnity suggested, as he has on a number of previous occasions when I've heard him, that the Clerk of Court could play a role in assisting and improving the efficiency and the cost effectiveness of the court system and could measure things like how long it takes cases to be processed and what the average cost per case is and things like that, and do some benchmarking and some comparisons and some measurements. And my question is, to what extent you would see that as something that you would include in your role as Clerk of Court?
I think that's a good question, and I think, again, that is a question that I can answer if and when I'm confirmed. I think that the clerk's role is one to provide efficiency and operational savings. As far as the benchmarking and those types of things, I believe that's some of the work that's done already through our computer system, but I don't... I'm not sure, because I haven't delved, Councilman, that deeply into it at this time. I'm still being the Inspector General on a daily basis.
I would just make a comment that I think the ultimate measure of political success is to have people who are on opposing sides both think that you're on their side. So far, you're accomplishing that, and I wish you the very best of success in continuing to be able to do that.
I thank you. I think.
Councilman Strawn.
Congratulations, Ms. Byrd, on your nomination here. But I sensed a smile in your face when you talk about litigation and your trial work and your experience of being in the courtroom and being the hands-on, which, having been there myself, this is an administrative position as opposed to the active role where you're... Even in the IG, you were talking with the person with the issue or the... Now you're going to be administering. How do you see your transition? Because this looks like the old part where lawyers don't like to move from the active role into being the administrator, and are you prepared for that?
I think I am, Councilman, and you are correct that you do see sort of the smile when I talk about my prior role. I tell people that being an assistant district attorney in Manhattan was the best job that I ever had. My husband reminds me that when I had it, I did not think that way. So I clearly did enjoy that, but I also think, in all seriousness, that every job I've had has been the just job I have. And I think that every job that I've had has prepared me for the next job and has been a stepping stone to what's next. This is a new role. This is more of an administrative role, but I think the work that I've done at the Agency of Inspector General has prepared me for this. As the Inspector General of the county, I don't, unfortunately, as much as some of my employees will tell you, as much as I want to, I don't do the investigations. It is more of an administrative job, albeit on a smaller scale, but it's administering the work of the office. And I think the skills that I've developed by doing that will easily and very nicely transfer to the Clerk of Courts office, so I'm ready and looking forward to the challenge. And I'll still have a smile.
That's good. The smiles are good, irrespective of whether you're in the arena or you're just help processing the arena materials. One of the things that I happened to notice was the amount of paperwork that we are still producing within the system that is non-e-file. Do you see a way in which we can move away from that? I know that some of that's statutory, and would you be desirous of moving away? When you go out to our documentation, you see just stacks and stacks and stacks.
Absolutely. And as you'll recall in my prepared statement, that is one of the goals that I do have. I think the prior clerk did a great job in moving us towards e-filing. The number is, I believe, now 94% of all the documents that can be e-filled are e-filled. I'd like to see that number increase. I'd like to work with the Domestic Relations Court, which I understand is the only court that is not currently using e-filing, to see if there is a possibility and we can get that towards a movement to e-file over there as well, because I do believe, as you are saying, that the reduction in paper is important.
But do they still get converted to paper in many cases, do they not, even to e-files?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't believe...
I think a lot of it does.
They do. I think that's incorrect, Councilman, but I can check and let you know.
When you go over to the place where all the scanning and documentation is being done, just amazing how much paper is still being done in the court system out there.
And I do think that that is a large reduction. I know I recently read some information that said that there's now, obviously, a record retention policy for the Clerk's office. Documents are being destroyed according to that record retention schedule, and there's a tremendous decrease in the paper that's there. So could you imagine what it was before all of this started? But I think continued effort to reduce it further is important.
Thanks.
Councilman Greenspan.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Just a few questions. So my... As I sit in this position, one of the things I ask folks who are sitting where you are has to do with a lot with vision and where they see things, from where they are today to where they may be in the future. We saw with, from Clerk First to Clerk Rocco, significant improvement, and was a big supporter of Clerk Rocco and what she did from taking an archaic department and making it one that is clearly moving in the right direction. Building on her successes, what improvements do you envision on initiatives that she brought forward to continue on?
I think, and not to be overly redundant, it goes to the e-filing and e-signing and really improving upon that vision and making that even more efficient and at the next level.
Yeah, I'd written down here, I meant my fault for saying except e-filing. So I didn't mean to throw that curve in there, but what other improvements do you envision being able to continue on and to enhance?
I think one of the other things, and again, this is all very preliminary, Councilman Greenspan, I think the next big improvement is really in terms of the collaboration and the communication, and I think it is getting all of the stakeholders and the judges to work together. So that's one of the major improvements and one of my major visions. Also, it's the professionalization and to continue to professionalize the office. The prior clerk, Clerk Rocco, did a great job. We know about the boxes she moved and that she got rid of. We know about the signs that she put up. But I think it also has to do with professionalizing the staff and making them the best that they can be and attaining and retracting, attracting and retaining the best talent.
And then actually, jumping to my third question, was dealing with staff development and training, because we know, having been here four-plus years or most of us, that the Clerk's office was probably one of the poorest trained, developed staff, also probably one of the least compensated staffs employed by the county. And I'm just... I just wouldn't get your vision and strategy on staff development and training.
I think some of that has started already, is my understanding, and I would definitely pick up the ball and keep it moving. All staff now, especially new staff, go through a new staff training specific to the Clerk's office, where they get trained on general policies and procedures, but also trained on sort of... And I'm dating myself a little bit, but it reminds me of when we were in grade school, and it was like, how does a bill become a bill? They get trained on how does a case become a case and walk through the case. In that sense, I think that's a good thing. I also think training also comes from engagement and also setting up pipelines and people's succession planning and all those types of things, so I would be looking to do that and further that.
Okay, great. I have two more questions, but you put a limit, Mr. Chair, so I can come back if you'd like.
We'll go to Mr. Jones, and we'll see where we go from there.
Since Councilman Greenspan is no longer the Chair of Rules and Ethics, guess it's all right for him to do three questions instead of two, you know? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And one, congratulations, Nayla, on the nomination to this point. Having worked with you for three years, we already know your character and integrity and professionalism that you've brought to the office over these three years, so...
Thank you.
As we listen, again, we know what we have here. I do have one question, and with your past experience as an Inspector General, it's possible that you have done investigations into the Clerk of Courts office.
I have.
Yeah. How will that color or influence your management of the office now? What do you see during, in light of your past experience, to the operation and management of this office?
That's actually a really good question, and I think the main, the major investigation that we did that first made me even familiar with the Clerk's office was the Mark Lime investigation, and that was one of the early investigations I supervised as Inspector General. The good thing about that investigation in terms of not coloring my perception is that Mr. Lime is gone, cameras are set up, corrective action has been taken, so where I don't see the things that led to the actions that he took happening again. I think the other positive about not coloring me is the audit report, and I've read the audit report. I read it when it came out in 2013. I reviewed it again, that those citations that were issued have been corrected. Currently, I get lots of complaints about every office from A to Z, and my semi-annual that comes out this month, you'll see it again. I don't believe that I will be colored in any way, because I don't... Some of them I don't even remember. The newer ones that are coming in, I've already, in an overabundance of caution, screamed myself off of them, so the deputy is handling that because I don't want to know about that, because I believe that it sort of keeps some integrity of the office, and that's been recent.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Caldwell, then back to Councilman Greenspan.
Through the chair to Nayla Byrd, I just want to come back to Councilman... The chair's question, you stated that there was 117 FTEs currently that were budgeted for, but you did not mention the number of how many employees that we have. You said there was not enough... We're budgeted for 117, but you said that there was less, but...
I believe there's 106.
106?
I believe.
Okay.
There are currently... One, two, three... There's a number of open vacancies currently. I can think of about six, looking at the organizational chart I've seen.
And do you think those will be refilled?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe there were, and there still may be, even postings up for some of them, so yes, I do believe they'll be refilled.
Okay. And to the question of what issues, concerns do you see they now have for the Office of Clerk of Courts, besides the professionalism that you stated that you wanted to bring in the e-filing? Are there any issues or other concerns that you see that the office has right now?
Right now, I just think it's one where folks haven't communicated appropriately and collaborated with one another. So other than that, at this time, with the information that I have, no.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Greenspan.
Great, thank you. Just continuing on my previous kind of workflow here, so we talked about improvements to current policies and practices, and then I jumped ahead to staff development. You led nicely into that question, but as far as future initiatives, new initiatives, do you have any thoughts at this point as to other initiatives that you may bring to the position that you've maybe seen in practice in New York or that may benefit this county?
At this time, Councilman, and I've spent a lot of time in the prepared statements talking about the importance that I see in collaboration and communication, and so any of the initiatives that I even have, which are very early in the developmental stages, I don't feel completely comfortable sharing in a public forum, since I haven't had an opportunity to talk with the folks that those initiatives would affect, and I think that would be completely unfair and contrary to having open lines of communication and collaboration. So I respectfully decline to answer that at this point, if that's okay.
So you're taking the fifth?
Something like that.
Okay. The last question I have, on the court cost project that we... You touched on, and I believe Councilman Gallagher was the one who really highlighted the enormity of the issue. Now that that issue is... We've probably collected most of what we're going to collect on a going-forward basis. What type of protocol do you envision or action to ensure that those costs state that... I'm sorry, that those fees are collected?
Oh, I think it's almost exactly what we're doing, continuing what we're doing and what we've done. I don't think a change... We don't change things that aren't broke, and I think that Councilman Gallagher, along with the former clerk, along with this council and others, did a great job in bringing that up to speed, so I don't see any reason to change that at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Gallagher.
Ms. Byrd, welcome.
Thank you.
As I know you're well aware, and unfortunately, I think Judge Russo left, everybody's aware that I've been probably more of the less-than-velvet hammer when it comes to the clerk and the courts, and especially with the computer systems, and most of the comments about the playbook, the sandbox are about me, and I understand that. But I think we did some good work. I think we went about it from my end, maybe a little bit too aggressively, from the court's end, maybe a little bit too aggressively at times. We were handed, unfortunately, a situation where a previous clerk just was absent without leave, and that's as nice as I can be about that. Ms. Rocco came in under difficult circumstances, did all the heavy lifting as far as I'm concerned, took the slings and arrows in the sandboxes as we all played together there, and got the Clerk's office to a point where I think we can all be proud that it's moving forward. And certainly, she needs to be thanked for that. Having said that, I still think the job that you're taking on is going to be very difficult. There's so much to do, and my colleagues are asking you a good question, and I think you're answering them in the best way you can. I think the best answer I've heard so far is taking the fifth, which tells me that you need to get in there to understand what needs to be done next, and I can appreciate that. I really can. Prosecutor McGinnity brings up the indigency with Councilwoman Simon, who is a... Practices in the courts. It's an issue that has to be looked at, has really, quite honestly, never been looked at. There's money out there. I don't know how to go about that, so I think that might be one of the first collaborative things that you're going to have to do with the court, is figure out what that's going to look like as far as the indigency. It's a problem. It's a big problem. The other things, you know, we leave to the experts and those that practice in the court. I would hope that, as you move forward, that you would look upon this council, and particularly the Safety Committee, as a tool to implement change, to help you implement change, as I hope the courts would look upon us the same way. I think we're past the rough waters, but I still think that you have an awful lot of work to do, and I was actually quite pleased when I heard you were nominated. I don't necessarily believe you have to be a practicing member of the bar to be Clerk of Courts. Doesn't hurt. Some of the best attorneys in Cuyahoga County were those that worked at law firms as runners, because you get to know the people at the counters in the Clerk's office, most important people in the Clerk's office are the people at the counters. And you've said that you recognize that. The last thing that I'll say is that I take my position as not an elected official, just representing a district in the county, but as an elected official, as a representative of the taxpayers in the county. And I think ultimately, that's our biggest challenge, is to make sure that the dollars are spent properly. That's always been my direction. It's going to continue to be my direction. I would hope that you would look at that as a direction that you would take. We're not going to clean everything up right away, but I anticipate that we will be able to clean up a lot. We've done a lot so far with past costs that we've been collecting. There's a lot more to go. So I wish you the best. I look forward to working with you, and Godspeed.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you very much.
Councilman Strawn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of my colleagues, Ms. Conwell, asked about strategic thinking and planning and going forward. And one of the things that I believe the, your head count of 117 is based upon past practices and how the office was set up and how it was administered prior to all the technology tools starting to come in in place? No?
No, no. I'm shaking my head only because the number of 117 that I said in response to Councilwoman Conwell's question is the number, I believe there's a $10.7 million budget that the clerk of courts operates under right now, and that 117 number is from that budget. So that number comes from the most recent report issued under Clerk Rocco. I mean, it's not back when a lot of the technology wasn't up to date. That's the most recent number.
Okay. But as more and more, as you indicated, the more technology gets utilized throughout every process.
Need less people.
Yeah, you're going to need, then that's the point of the strategic question, is to, you don't, I would hope that as you go forward and look at this, as we incorporate more technology throughout the whole system of clerk of courts, that you look at it not based, historically, a lot of times budgets are, what did I do last time? What do I add this time? And was it my inflation? As opposed to strategically looking at where do we go in the future and what does the clerk of courts look like five years and 10 years down the road as to my needs and the staffing needs will be based on those tools that we envision using things like these and all the other things that are about ready to launch into these areas. So.
I agree with you 100% Councilman, and perhaps my response to Councilwoman Conwell was not as thorough as it could have been. But I believe in response to the strategic plan question, I try to identify that obviously I would be doing a 30, 16, 90, and a longer-term assessment and a needs assessment on what's needed in the office, both in terms of operationally, as well as in terms of policy, obviously in terms of budget, obviously in terms of staffing, and what those needs are both immediately as well as into the future with all of these technological changes and hopeful where we can get in terms of technology. So I am in agreement with your question.
And I know we had a conversation before this with the high suggestion of utilizing our IT department as well into a very incorporated part of where we go in this office, because as good as it might be to be a colleague with the rest of the legal staff, I think it's really incumbent if we're going to improve our processes to make sure that's.
And I believe that happens already. It's my understanding that there are three individuals from IT Director Maury's staff who are assigned to the clerk of courts permanently. I know that Jeff is a big partner with the clerk of courts. I've had one or two meetings with Jeff over some issues that he just wanted to loop me in in the event that I am confirmed for this position. So, so yes.
Yeah. So the 117 is not a building block. It's hopefully.
117 is not ingratiated in stone.
Thank you.
Although it is today.
Counselman Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chair, I don't have a question, I just have a statement. So I would defer my question to Councilwoman Greenspan, if you would like to use my question. Or Councilman President Brady. But first, I'd just like to say thank you for not taking your talents away from Cleveland or Cuyahoga County itself. We truly appreciate having a scholar like you here with us. And to take an office that had not existed before and to get it to where it is today is just amazing. I am one of the latest, newest additions to this council. And coming to the door, I've heard so many things around the IG office, this and that. But it really took my experience to meet with you and your staff at the office to really get a keen understanding about what it is you all do and how effective you all have been for the last four years. And I can truly say that you all have did an outstanding job, you and your staff that's sitting in the back today. And your supervisory role and your oversight that you've provided to that office, I think will serve well here in the clerk's office. I just hope that you stay true to your commitment of continuing down the path of financial integrity that we have started with the clerk's office. I think former Clerk Rocco had done some great things, and that was one of my concerns when I heard that she was leaving, is that do we turn back the hands of time? Do we fall back into the position that we were before? And I thank you so much for committing to this council that you will continue those same processes, these policies that were put in place to continue to do some of the great things that were started there. I just appreciate you. For those reasons, aside of your experience, your wealth of knowledge, you have my support today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Thank you. Thank you. No one likes the inspector general, so thank you.
Any other questions by the committee? Councilwoman Conwell.
So through the chair to Naila, just want to come back to that strategic plan. So I know you stated the 30, 16, 90-day assessment. Can you commit to this council that you will implement a strategic plan at least for two years, a two-year timeframe? To let us know, you know, what?
I guess I'm a little unclear, Councilwoman Conwell. Are you asking, can I submit a strategic plan for your approval on what happens operationally at the clerk's office?
We don't need approval, but we are the oversight of the financial budget, just to see in which, in which terms you're going toward resources that you will need for the clerk of courts?
Sure. And I, yeah. But it's, my understanding, at least with the inspector general role, is that's also done through the budget process when I, I was going to look at Councilwoman Miller, but I guess it's now Councilwoman Greenspan, when I appear before budget hearings and outlay that stuff. So I think that would be encompassed in that as well, yes.
Okay. And could you delve a little more into the types of things you would do to bring professionalism to the office?
Sure. It's a continuation of some of the training and the cross-training that Clerk Rocco started. I think it's critical, if I'm confirmed, I will commit, and this is a commitment I will make and not take the fifth, I will commit to this council and all that are listening that I will meet with every employee of the clerk's office on a one-on-one meeting and to get their feedback, get their opinion, get their feedback, what works, what doesn't work, what hasn't worked, and really get to know what they believe could be an effective process with the office. And I think it's not just having that one meeting, a one-time meeting, and then I don't see that, but I think it's doing stuff or doing that quasi-regularly. Now, I'm not meeting with every employee every week, but for a certain timetable. I think it's also treating, and it's the way I try to live my life, and especially my work life, but treating people with respect and at the same time demanding respect, demanding the dedication, and really leading by example. So I think it's all of those things that go into how to professionalize an office.
Counselwoman Simon.
Thank you. There was some talk of the clerk's office perhaps organizing with a labor union, and if that carries out, what if anything, you know, I know what the law says, but would you be able to work in that environment if the clerk's office does? And would you look forward to that happening?
I did hear that that was on the table. My understanding, and someone from HR talked to me, that it's now with, I think, and I'm looking at Majid, I believe it's with Assistant Law Director Morales, those discussions, and that will probably be moving forward. I have no problem with that, working with the unions. I've worked, I don't want to say I've worked with unions, but I've supervised investigations where we've had unions, especially from HHS, or from my friends to my left in the sheriff's department with the unions there. I have no issues working with unions or them unionizing. That's their decision.
Right. Any other questions by the committee?
Well, again, council people, I thank you for the opportunity, and I hope I've answered your questions.
Well, thank you very much. We, you know, we've seen, this is one area, I'm glad to say that, I think that we can see that the change in the charter has made a dramatic difference in the office over the last four years, particularly as we find out a lot more about what's gone on over the last 20 years. So I feel very good about it and good about your appointment. And if there aren't any more questions, could I have a motion to recommend this resolution to the full council for second reading adoption under suspension of rules?
Subpoor.
Ms. Simon moved and seconded, among others. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed. This resolution will be on the council's February 24, 2015 agenda. We'll look forward to seeing you again then. You're on your way. Okay. The next item on the agenda is executive session, but the people that we have coming to speak with us aren't due until 4:00, although some of them may be here. What I'm going to do is take a little break until 4:00, then we'll begin the executive session, if there are no. Okay? All right.